Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the winter edition of the November nineteenth, twenty twenty four meeting. I'd like to welcome you all. And we'll call the meeting to order Commissioner Jones.
For example.
Commissioner Barra.
Here.
Mr. Gozer also here. If you would stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance, I appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is a public hearing. There is none listed. Four comments from the public. So we'll go in the room first, and then we'll go online. So is there any public comments in the room? How about online? Let's call in the room and online. Well, Commissioners, I'd like to make a public comment. I would like to congratulate the clerk and all of her subordinates in the office, the law enforcement, IT, legal, and everybody who read an amazing election. I think in the last forty years that I've been voting, never ever once supported a complete list of candidates that won. I suspect that's everybody's experience throughout America. What was really impressive to me is when the recount was asked for, it was exactly the count that was given on election night. I think that that's really important data to remember. Once again, it was exactly on the election night to the vote. And so I want to thank you all for running a really great election, for everybody who turned out, for all the poll workers, for all the election judges. That's a really important part of our democracy. So thank you very much. Yes.
Going to do it on a morning meeting when maybe there are more people, but I could also echo this too. I just want to say thank you to everybody. I could not have done this work without the help of election judges, county staff, volunteers, Roden Bridge Department helps us set up our polls on the day before the election. EMA was a huge help. The Sheriff's Office had their deputies there at the polls on election day and also escorting my staff back with the returns. That was huge. Also, IT, we couldn't have done any poll books without Adam's office. City IT was also there all day to help with support for the poll books. Jennifer, of course, my legal. We'll just leave it at that. But I just, I cannot thank everybody enough for all the support and all the help. I really couldn't have done this without the whole collaboration of the whole county. I mean, it really was a group effort, and I really thank everybody for that. Thank you.
Good teamwork.
Well, I I continue to get positive remarks about, even though it was so
So relaxed.
It was busy. Everybody was understanding and and it's it's cool when they the positive just keeps coming in.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. Well done. Yes, I see no more interest for comments from the public Commissioners. I entertain a motion to close.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item five disclosures. Commissioner Jones, any disclosures?
Don't believe so.
You sure, Barbara?
I don't think so.
Not for me. Also, six considerations of changes on the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? No? All right. Item seven, approval of the consent agenda. Mr. Senator, entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. That moves us to item eight. Present for approval invitation to bid for two diesel, three five hundred, one ton, four door, four wheel drive, long bed pickup trucks and two diesel, thirty five hundred, one ton, four door, four wheel drive, duly long bed trucks. Rob, good evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Oh. Our fleet is, we do have some vehicles in our fleet that have a lot of miles on them and stuff. We have nineteen ninety nine F three fifty Ford that's got two hundred and seventy three thousand miles on it. That's what we're looking to replace one of those. Ninety seven, F two fifty Ford with a hundred and thirty four thousand. And we have another vehicle that we'd probably kind of keep into the fleet as a spare vehicle. It has a hundred and sixty thousand on them. So we've been getting the use out of our vehicles. So.
Wow, those are almost older than our kids.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, so so anyway, we'd like your permission to send out bids for those four vehicles. Two of them would be a single rear end and two of them would be duals.
Thank you, Rob. Commissioners, any questions for?
No, just one observation on page. I believe it's seven of this document. You have to be consistent with the vehicle and delivery date. It has an April thirtieth of this year. I think we wanted it next year.
Yeah.
It is correctly stated a page before that, but.
Right. I appreciate that that notice, so.
Commissioners, any other questions? Now to entertain a motion for item eight, please.
We approve item eight as presented. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Nine, present for approval grant agreement between Wyoming Office of Homeland Security and Albany County in the amount of one hundred and twenty nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for the purchase and installation of a generator for the detention center from September first, twenty twenty four through August thirty first, twenty twenty six. Bailey.
Good evening, Commissioners. Back in the spring, we applied for a state home homeland security grant for the generator for the detention center. We didn't get exactly what we asked for, but we did get a good chunk. So this is just that agreed after that.
Commissioners, any questions? Does not entertain a motion for nine, please.
We approve item nine as presented. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Bailey. Ten, present for approval request for proposals for the removal and installation of replacement of the Albany County Planning Annex Emergency Generator. Kate, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is just a request for a proposal to replace the emergency generator at the planning annex. And grant funding has already been secured.
Commissioners, any questions? I entertain a motion for item ten, then, please.
I move that item ten is presented. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. And I'm thinking, Bailey, that's ARPA money. Is that right?
I know. That is actually COVID money. I know.
It, I know.
We got a list from that COVID grant of Kim's. Generator was on there. Kate let me know that that generator was not working, and it's the DACA, DACA EMA or EOC. So that's why we're pretty, I was a little shocked when I got approval. I'm not gonna lie, but I'll take it. So, but that is not mine.
Thank you, guys. Item eleven, present for approval solar arrays for the courthouse and IT. Jake, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. So last time we met, we discussed the solar arrays for both the IT and the courthouse. I reached back out to Leo, who was the, with Creative Energies, who was the intent to award, as we discussed last time. Then I asked him to give us a revision on his proposal and make sure that his numbers for the offset rate or the the rate that Rocky Mountain Power was charging for the the courthouse was accurate. And he gave us a revised proposal, and his first numbers were correct. And I reached out to Rocky Mountain Power and asked them why there was such a disparity in cost between the IT and the courthouse building. They're on different schedules, is what she said. And three days is easier to deliver, and it's it's cheaper to produce. That's why the rate is significantly less. And so after reviewing Leo's updated proposal for the courthouse and seeing that none of the, none of the numbers really changed, except for some reason, it got a few hundred dollars more expensive, I think because of the difference in solar panels. They're more slightly more efficient, but I think they cost slightly more. But all those things nearly being equal, my overall kind of evaluation of these was the same as it was last. I mean, it's the courthouse still costs a lot of money for not much payback. The IT building is, I mean, after, you know, fourteen years, it pays for itself, but it's still upfront costs eighty thousand, eighty one thousand. And then if the grants are awarded, then it will cost about fifty thousand to the county, which in the long term, it does end up paying itself off, whereas the courthouse at the end of the twenty years, it still is underwater. What else can I say? The grant funding, the, I had a little schedule here on the front page that if the project goes into surface service in twenty twenty four, then it will be filed or applied for rather in whenever taxes are submitted in twenty twenty five. And then after that is done, then at some point in the future, then those rebates or refunds come in. Though it's not a quick turnaround. Is that right, Bailey?
Uh, yeah.
It could potentially be a year, two, three.
Actually, three years.
Three years, three years.
Three years.
Three years turnaround on those on those grants. So it's not a quick grant turnaround, but to sum it up, that's what I found, and that's what I'm reporting back to the Commission on.
Thank you, Jake. Any questions?
I guess so, Jake. We would have to have upfront the the whatever money whether we got the grant or whether we did not.
Yes, and and even if the grant is awarded, it's still eighty one thousand dollars to get it installed. And then after it is installed, then through the tax incentives and the tax process, those grant fundings are applied for and rewarded, if you will, in up to three years.
So, well, IT and well, that's what
Well, that's the eighty one thousand dollars. But that's what, I mean.
That's why I just wanted to make it perfectly clear. That's just for the IT building.
Yes, ma'am. If the courthouse building is almost a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, and so my my recommendation, again, I'm not the one making the final decision, but the IT building looks like an attractive project because it does have value in the long term where it pays itself off. If the county is willing to fork over the eighty one thousand dollars upfront right now, so. So, thank you. Any other questions?
Just a little clarity. Programs like this have been operated for nonprofits or government entities. Were only allowed tax credits, right? Previous to the Inflation Reduction Act, tax credits didn't come into the use for nonprofits and government entities. Inflation Reduction Act has a direct pay in lieu of a tax credit. So now this is a payment in lieu of a tax credit that was not available to nonprofits or government entities before the Inflation Reduction Act. That I know, I just listened to an ITC webinar for the IRA.
Because I can't speak to that. I don't.
Yeah.
That's what my research showed as well, because that was my initial concern was, well, if it's a tax credit, we don't pay those taxes. How does that work? So when we looked into this before, I found the same thing in my research. It's like a reimbursement. You pay it, and then they reimburse it back to you for whatever percentage you qualify.
Yep, yep. Yeah. Commissioners, any other questions? Yeah, all right. Entertainer motion item eleven, please.
I move that, I actually have a comment first. I believe, you know, that this building is going to be here for some time. We're going to continue to use it as far as the courts and even the sheriff's office and who knows how much longer into it. While courthouse building is costly, I still believe it's the right thing to do, just because it is bringing down our what do I want to say? Our footprint here as far as solar, sorry, climate change and and all that I feel is still worth it. And so I would like to make a motion to approve both projects for both IT as well as the courthouse.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
I absolutely am dead set against putting solar panels on this building because they're going to go on the roof that and the roofing with those membranes is so sensitive that I think we'll have nothing but problems, problems, problems. And okay, it's they they might guarantee it, but you still have all the problems and the leakage. And I think it's it's absolutely foolish to go forward with anything on this building.
Well, as a director of a building that has a flat membrane roof and has had solar panels now for seven years without a leak and without any holes being punched, and I do go up there frequently. This is not the first flat roof with a membrane that solar companies have put panels on, and this is not the first flat roof membrane that's Creative Energy. So they've done hundreds of them. And so I feel comfortable that they'll guarantee that work and the warranty will be guaranteed. They have that insurance assurance for them.
But I still think it's foolish.
Okay, noted. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Can I ask where we want to pay this from?
Would you have a recommendation?
Well, I've been talking to Tracy prior to. We're going to have to do a budget amendment for her property tax refund, and I know we have cash on hand. It can probably come out of there. I just think we need to have that in the motion as to where it's going to be paid from, because we don't have it budgeted. So there will have to be a budget amendment before we go forward with the project itself, obviously, because we can't pay for it until that budget amendment is done.
Okay, so how do you want that to read?
Good, just where it can be paid out of cash on hand.
Okay. So I made my motion to say I move to approve both projects for solar panels. Let me come out of cash on hand.
Second. Anything else, Karen?
Nope.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same side?
Nay. It would be aye if it was for IT only, but with two buildings, nay.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you very much. I really do appreciate the background, Jake, repeatedly. Item twelve, award the bid for the purchase and installation of a security gate and badge system for the Roden Bridge lot and direct the chair to sign the contract. Bailey, good evening. Excellent. Rob?
As you know, we've been pursuing a security gate for probably four or five years now, and through the hard work of Bailey and the help of Kim and the sheriffs. It looks like we have the chance to put a security gate in. We did have a a bid for the project from Southwest Industrials for sixty three thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. That puts, gives us a security gate, but it also gives us a badge system, so we can allow, make it easier for other department heads if they need to use the conference room, which Kim's already used it once. We have a few little bugs to to get out of it, but namely curtains, but I I think it worked well for them and and would be a good option for other meetings and
Well, it served us well for a while.
Yeah.
The security gate would allow through myself and IT to give clearance if it was on a Friday or something. You know, have the gates open and and that the department head or whoever was using it would have access to the building that.
Rob, was this the only bid you got?
Yes, it was. We had, I believe there's two others that looked at it, but they didn't bid on it.
And was this, had you looked to see what something like this would cost? Was this in the ballpark?
Yeah, it is in the ballpark. I think, I don't know how long the sheriff's office had theirs, but it was roughly around fifty thousand seventy years ago, maybe.
Well, we've gotten quotes almost every year because we went out for operations, so it's right around all the way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then, Rob, that probably goes in in the spring or or summer.
I'm assuming so, just because of the digging and some of the stuff that was going to require to put in the electrical stuff and technical. Yes, I think we have what to finish, August? I think it's August. Yeah.
It shouldn't take long if one's a start.
Yeah.
If you guys do plan to approve this, this is to be paid out of ARPA funding, a hundred percent out of ARPA funds. I'd really appreciate if you stayed in the motion.
Okay. Any other questions for Rob or Bailey? Not an entertaining motion for item twelve, please.
I move that we award the bid for the purchase and installation of security gate and badge system for the Roden Bridge lot and direct the chair to sign the contract, and this will be coming out of the ARPA funds one hundred percent. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Bailey. Thirteen, award the bid for the purchase and installation of a digital sign for the south side of the courthouse property and direct the chair to sign the contract. Bailey and Adam are listed. Adam, thank you very much.
Um, going back to our original. I'm going to call it a town hall meeting. When we, when the ARPA funding came forward, you guys asked for brainstorming sessions associated with the funding as to how it can be utilized and as well as COVID funding to, what what can we do with this money? This was one of the ideas that came forward in those conversations, was adding an electronic media sign to the south lawn. We have, you know, you know, the people highway associated to Laramie right at our front door there. So this project, per your guys' guidance, went up for RFP. We had a single submission through Schlosser Signs. You see Alex is on the call, represented with Schlosser Signs, the one that put the bid together. They did come through and do at least a walkthrough and scope set. They provided two design sets associated with layout. I believe there's even options going forward if, you know, if there's uncertainty associated with the sign or kind of a scope sketch. I know a lot of the signs themselves can be mounted to truck set and parked temporarily, just so you can get an idea and a feel. I'm really just here to answer questions based on your guys' directive.
All right, thanks, Adam. Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, what's the timeline for this? Adam?
Sure. Let's see. That was page, was in the submission. See here. Their current schedule calls for a final billing and delivery just before April. That might push back depending on how the electrical pouring goes. There's quite a few conduits that have to bore through the south lawn into the planter base, and I could associate that with Alex and provide any context there.
So how close will it be to the south sidewalk there on Grand?
My understanding, it'll be essentially kind of centrally mounted within the planter itself, right? So that, that, you know, we're not pushing any further into the sidewalk. The sign, the current sign is actually kind of set forward within the planter. I think best, real estate wise, would be a central mounting. I believe that's what they called out again in that design. So I'm just, I mean, in case you guys didn't see any of it or didn't have it there, I did bring just a couple there design sets. I can pass those up. They were in your packet for you as well, but those were a part of the RFP as well as the time schedule reference sets.
Mr. Schlosser, would you have to add anything? You don't have to if you don't want to, but I see you there.
Yeah, this is Alex Schlosser from Schlosser Signs, and I appreciate the consideration. I would like to add that the two design concepts that we provided were simply concepts, and that we understood this RFP to be a design build. So, you know, we are happy to receive any feedback that, you know, the team there at Laramie County has in regards to what the sign would look like and, you know, incorporate some other designs that would fit your guys' needs.
Yeah, and if you would, outside, I'm sure you have plenty of experience with that. What type of warranty goes with with being outside?
So we have a five-year parts and labor warranty on the entire sign package.
Then I suspect you've probably had signs out longer than that. Is that your experience, Alex?
Yeah, absolutely. And I would be happy to provide some some examples if that would, you know, if that'd be useful. But yes, we have, we have products like this all throughout. You know, we we work primarily on the front range. We have products like this all across, you know, Denver, Colorado Springs, up to Cheyenne, so.
I'll just give you the entire pack.
Okay, and is there a way to to maybe shut the sign down at night if that were needed, if that were to be something that people wanted to have happen?
There, yeah, there's options for controlling the sign. There's a program that accompanies the sign. It's, you can control it from multiple different computers. Also, there's a cell phone app, and so it could be pre-programmed to turn off at a certain time. It could also be manually overridden fairly easily from a mobile network. It can also be dimmed in the evening. It needs to be fairly bright when the sun is out, obviously, so that the the screen can be seen, and then that can be set to dim automatically as low as it needs to go at night. So there's options for controlling it and making sure that it's not, you know, offensive or distracting.
And then I'm sure you've thought this out, but the security of somebody taking over your sign and putting something that you might not appreciate in view of Grand Avenue, is that something you guys obviously have worked through?
Sorry, was that my question?
It'll be, I mean, essentially, it'll be a hardwired scope set here, and it'll be a limited access scope as to the platform and such. I, this is, again, the design set. I haven't done too much review associated to the, if there's a cloud back under any infrastructure set. Most of it sounded to be running locally, so we'll isolate and then give access either through a module computer or remote set that's needed.
Super. Thank you. Any other questions? Not an entertaining motion for item thirteen, it is. Yes, good.
I don't know. If you guys wish to approve this, five fifty five thousand, nine thirty nine and twenty cents to be paid out of ARPA funding, then I met with Tracy and Kayla, and we, well, they found some money in the building reserve account that would pay for the remaining of this project. This would then have used all the ARPA funding, and then we would be all obligated.
All right. Commissioners, entertain a motion for thirteen, please.
I move that we approve item thirteen as presented and direct the chair to sign the contract. Do you want the amounts in the motion to, okay, and fifty five thousand, nine hundred and thirty nine dollars and twenty cents will be coming out of the ARPA funds with the remainder out of the building reserve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same side, please.
Yay.
That motion carries. Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Alex, for joining us today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fourteen, ratified revised energy retrofit grant contract between Wyoming Energy Authority and Albany County, Wyoming, in the amount of fifty thousand through December thirty first, twenty twenty four for lighting replacements at the detention center. Bailey, thank you.
I gave me for sure. We just had a quick minor just amendment to extend the contract by three months. There was a little miscommunication to get this grant closed out, so we should take care of it.
Commissioners, any questions? And Bailey, are all the lights installed? All of, is it?
Yes, everything is installed. I got the final, the final bill in September. That was the communication is we thought we had till the end of September to do the project, and then usually I have ninety days to close out the grant. Well, that was not the case in this one, so.
Okay.
But to my understanding, everything is installed. But to my understanding, everything is installed and working and everything.
Okay, alright. I'll ask you next time I see you.
And they will have to um be reporting monthly on those um rock mountain bills that they receive to make sure that it is doing what we were hoping it was gonna do. Looks like Aaron has a.
Sheriff, it looks like your hand's up. Please, who are yours?
Yes, all the lights have been installed in the detention center. That project has been completed.
Awesome. Thank you. I'll be interested to see what the bills are when it's finished or when they come out. I entertain a motion for fourteen if there are no more questions.
I move that we ratify the revised energy retrofit grant contract between Wyoming Energy Authority and Albany County, Wyoming, in the amount fifty thousand dollars through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four for lighting replacements at the detention center. Now, do we need to put? How that's paid?
No, that one's good. That one's already.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Fifteen. Thank you, Bailey. Present for approval. Thank you, Sheriff. Contract between the Board of Commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming and Albany County District Court's Commissioner Jaclyn Bridgman. Heather, I have you up. Who are yours? Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for letting me join online. I'm just back from being sick the last few days. Um, presenting um the memo of understanding with uh Jaclyn Bridgman, who is our uh juvenile treatment drug court judge. Uh, this contractor or understanding has historically been uh through the Supreme Court. Um, the state just informed us uh two months ago that they were canceling the MOU and wanted uh these funds paid out uh through the county directly. We've been in contact with Jen and and Bailey on this, and um this our solution for this at point, at this point, um it's a monthly uh invoice that is paid out to the juvenile treatment court judge. This contract will go through the end of December. Um, we have some uh plans. Say some exciting changes coming up for our programs. I'll be back next month. But these funds will be paid out of the um state grant for our juvenile treatment court. And they've already been allocated. We're just uh paying them out differently.
Thank you, Heather. Commissions, any questions?
Yeah, um, why don't we not have the MOU before us?
I, that one I sent back to you, Heather. Did we not? I didn't get it to Carrie?
Um, I had forwarded.
I can forward it to you.
I apologize.
Heather, is there a hurry on that? I hate to approve things that I have not gotten to read, including MOUs. Is there, there a hurry on this?
Um, the only hurry is that, um, and and it can absolutely be pushed to the next meeting. Um, that won't be an issue. Um, the only conflict at this point is that the state told us after the fact that they were not paying. So um, our magistrate is owed uh three months, but she understands that we're in the process of figuring out this new system. And so I'm happy to communicate with her. It's not a problem that we push it to the next meeting.
Thank you, Heather. I feel comfortable with that. I do wanna look over the MOU.
I as well think that that's a good course of action, quite honestly.
Yeah, not a problem at all.
So do we need a motion to table this or postpone it?
Postpone it to the third.
Okay. I move that we uh postpone the approval of the MOU between the Board of Commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming and Albany County District Court Commissioner um Jaclyn Del Bridgman till December, the first meeting in December, December third. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
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 That motion carries. Um, thank you, Heather. Uh. Sixteen. Present for approval memorandum of understanding between Albany County Fire District Number One and Albany County Emergency Management in the amount of ten thousand for communication services from December first, twenty twenty-four through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Okay, good evening.
Um, so this, the, do they have? Well, this is um when, when we created the communications specialist position, the fire district agreed to contribute for services. Um, and this is the official agreement to finalize that uh in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
And I don't have this one, then you do not have this yet. So if you just wanna tell them what it's for, we'll have the official agreement. We'll push it to December thirty-third, not thirty-third also.
Okay. Okay, so it's for uh radio repairs, installation, programming, patching during incidents. Um, all services that Scott is already providing to the district. This is just the official paper or pen to paper and uh the payment to the county.
Will this cause you any distress moving this to December third, Kate?
Uh, no, we just, we'd just like to get it through before the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissions, any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion for sixteen, then please.
I move that we approve item sixteen as presented and table it until December third. Second.
Moved in seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Alright.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seventeen. Present for approval. Request to hire a new office admin billing coordinator at public health. Kim, good evening.
Hello, good evening. Um, so uh we have lost our front office manager after being there for three years. She moved back home, and I currently have a position open, and I have been filling in in the meantime. And during my filling in, I have come to the realization, um, we have a lot of turnover in public health as well as, I think, I'm going on the longest manager in the last, like, seven years, maybe. Um, so there's always like things that you figure out. In fact, Jill was actually um trained by one of our nurses. So in my time up at the front desk, I have noticed that we have not collected on about seventy thousand dollars of revenue um in the last five years, maybe. I think I'm pinpointing it too. Um, so I'm asking permission to create a second admin person that would focus on the billing. I have um filed intent to, or a letter of intent to Cigna to get into their network. Um, we've recently uh just filed our paperwork to be able to submit claims for medic, um Medicare Part D. So whereas people would normally have to go to a pharmacy only, they can now come to us for certain vaccines, and we can um bill those. So I'm also trying to get into network with some of the co-ops that we see pretty frequently. So I was thinking with this additional position, it would help us be able to track all of this revenue. Uh, that follow-up piece that needs to be done, whether it was like a claim that wasn't done right or, you know, insurance paid part of it, and we need to follow up with the client for the other part. Um, so I'm just asking permission. Um, as far as I can tell, my budget will cover it. Um, I'm still on that fence about how, whether it be like a full-time or just thirty hours. Um, as I narrow down all of the little nuances of being upfront. Um, I still haven't come up with a final thought on that, but I'm just asking permission to at least look at that option.
Kim, was Jill um full-time?
She was full-time, and it used to be a two-person position, and then at some point, they, they made cuts and they made it one. And I can honestly tell you that sitting up there, answering phones, navigating the people coming in and trying to like figure out the claims, it's a lot. Um, so I'm trying to divide it where that second person would definitely be that billing part that would follow up with all of those um claims that need to be resubmitted. I'm pretty sure I've submitted like six claims that I tried to repair, so they're gonna be like, what have you done? But I am not a biller by any means of the sense, but you know, with our current future, you know, who knows what's gonna happen? You know, we're, we certainly enjoy being able to offer vaccines to those who want them. And one of the nice things, if we do get that revenue, we always try to have available, if people can't afford vaccines, that we let, we can pay for them to get that vaccine if it's not one that's state-provided. So um this would certainly help make that a longer-lasting program. Um, yeah, as I've been sitting up there, there's a lot of things that I'm trying to like figure out and weed out. And then, um, you know, we've done a lot to start rebuilding some of our partnerships. Um, we um have started working with the Vet Lab again, and we're expanding our travel vaccines. We're one of the only places that offer yellow fever, which is um a very expensive vaccine for those traveling. And now we're starting to do rabies more um for the travelers that are going for long periods of time as well as the Vet Lab, like new people over there that would need it, and then doing some in um Japanese encephalitis, tick encephalitis. So by expanding that, with people who travel, usually are able to pay their vaccines. So that would be like one of the big follow-ups, because it just gets lost when you have nine million things going on.
Kim, you don't have to convince me that you need more help. I just wonder where is this person gonna be? Cause is not Andrew up in front as well?
Nope. So Andrew has his own office, so I would have both of them up front, which would still allow a nurse's desk station where they can, you know, print labels for labs and stuff. So we would have two. The other thing that would be great, so that's the other thing. Like with Jill, she had vacation, and then she broke her clavicle, so I was sitting up there for four out of five weeks. And, you know, when you don't have anybody else trained, it's a nurse that has to sit up there, and there's better things that a nurse can be doing to see patients and that sort of thing. So having that ability to cover each other would be really nice, too.
Good. I'm glad you asked, because I thought maybe you can put a desk in there.
No, 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 wait, no. Well, we're, we're trying to figure that. I did hire a county, a full, well, she's starting off part-time. I hired an MCH county um nurse, which is exciting. It's been empty since I left it to be the manager, and I'm still deciding, trying to figure out where we're gonna put her, plus I have a full-time and a part-time state nurse position. So we will, we'll, we'll just cross that bridge when we get to it, and, you know, maybe I'll just go in the conference room or come and bother Bailey all day long. Yes, I can. So, but yeah, we're working on that, but, you know, the more, if we can do this, you know, I feel like they will be able to also help us do our outreach, which is so effective, and it's been a lot of fun. We've had um good turnouts this year, so.
Yeah.
I'm just starting to ramble now, so I'll bring it down.
Any other questions? Bailey, have you considered a billing agency um as a, as a place to not have to train somebody in the nuances of medical billing, which is incredibly Byzantine?
Yeah, well, so I haven't considered that. Um, you know, Jill's position is open now, and we've been getting definitely several applicants, and I have gone through, and um there are a lot with, well, I don't know about a lot, but there's definitely some that have that experience. Um, my, my hope and my goal is that I can actually like streamline this process and figure out a better way to um move forward, but yeah, um, I haven't thought of it.
I think it's very well worth thinking.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, I do also have um the ability to send somebody, like if I were able to hire somebody, to send them to like do those billing and coding classes, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but I just wonder, now that I'm on this side of the nursing realm, I wanna get my.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, any other questions?
Question about funding, so Jill's position is, is already budgeted. You don't have another position budgeted. Have enough in your budget to pay for it.
That's what I was talking to Amanda about, and she thinks I do, but I haven't, I can certainly come back.
My only thought is, is I hate to open up a new position and then let's not be able to fund it on budget time. I just don't know what the budget's gonna look like.
Yeah. Oh, I see, like.
In July.
Right.
Do you know what I mean? I mean, you might have enough to cover it this year, but I, I would hate for you to hire a position and then let's not have.
Yeah.
Funny, so, I don't know, I, maybe, I would recommend, maybe if you can go forward with filling Jill's position, and we can maybe sit and chat about what that feels like, maybe within your budget, because I know you have a part-time line help as well, but I think that is with Linda's position.
I think, yes, yes.
Just a little bit further on that.
That, yeah, that sounds great.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to.
I just hate to hire a position and then let's not have the funding on budget time. I'm not saying that we wouldn't, but.
Yeah, no, believe me, I, I get that. Yeah. It was just more of the, let's start that conversation, because it takes a long.
If you already have.
What a process.
If you already have applicants coming in, it's a good thing, too.
Yes.
We can chat this week, too.
Perfect.
Should we put this on the December third?
Yeah. Yeah. I'm, yeah, that's fantastic.
Okay. I move that we uh place item seventeen on the December third meeting to revisit as far as.
I think if you guys are okay to hire the new office admin, because that's filling Jill's position.
Yeah.
That's filling a position that's already there.
Yes, yeah, this is, yeah, this is creating a second position.
This one here is creating the second.
Right, because she doesn't need.
She doesn't need.
Our permission for. No, yeah, correct. Perfect.
I move that we place item seventeen uh on the table for December third we uh meeting to revisit the hiring of a new part-time, possibly full-time administrator.
Yeah, thank you, sorry. Thank you. I appreciate your job. Sorry, I forgot the motion.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you for getting us on Cigna with public health. Thank you for doing a lot of that work. That's gonna be really nice.
Yes.
Yes.
We're working on it.
Yeah. Uh, eighteen. Make appointment to the Albany County Predator Management uh Control Board. Commissions, that entertain a motion.
I move that we um approve. Julie McAllister? Julie, I kept wanting to say Jennifer, and I knew that wasn't my Julie McAllister to the Predator Management Board for three-year term. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Uh, and thank you, Julie, for once again putting your name in. Uh, nineteen. Present for concurrence. Albany County Board of Commissioners Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero one nine. City of Laramie, Wyoming Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-eight. Resolution reappointing two members to the Environmental Advisory Committee for this uh city of Laramie, and that's a joint board. Um, and those uh Paul McDonald and Jennifer Coolidge. Any questions? Not entertain a motion for nineteen, please.
I move that we um approve the, we appointed Paul McDonald and Jennifer Coolidge to the Environmental Advisory Committee. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. And twenty. Approve payroll and vouchers for November twenty twenty-four. I'd entertain that motion.
I move that we approve payroll and vouchers in November twenty twenty-four. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Seeing uh, no more business. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. We will call the November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting adjourned. And we'll see you on December third at nine thirty AM. Thank you all. Have a nice night.